And thank you Julie for doing that. First on the first on the agenda for tonight is old business. So this is a discussion of a legal opinion for the commercial development in the shoreline zone application. This is the change of use of prior application. The applicants are the right side wooden boat owners, Sean Grant, 21 Hill Road. And so, Michael, you are here to to give us an opinion. Thank you for your time. Would you like to go at this time or discuss anything?
First I had to unmute. Thanks. You know, frankly, I guess I'm I'm open to questions. I'd like to think I made it fairly clear and answered your questions. I know maybe maybe the reference to the length of the the packet had something to do with my three page memo. But I tried to try to answer all the questions and give you a little bit of explanation. And I think the ultimate question is number five or number number six, I guess, was probably the one that was really bothering you. So I think I've answered that, but I'm glad to answer any follow up questions.
Okay.
I personally think your opinion was pretty clear. One thing I had, it's not a question. I know in my own mind, the answer is that the lots on the other side of the street have no bearing whatsoever on this particular activity, if you will. They're separate lots and not part of these. Or a single lot is really what it is. But anyway.
Yeah, yeah, Rich, and as as I said, I mean, that was that was fairly clear the last time around. And still holes. I guess one other thing that I would add, you know, Mr. Chairman, I mean, one question might be why why this hadn't come up before? And I think one thing that's you know, obvious to me is until you really look at the application and look at the site plan. I don't think anyone ever knew. I certainly didn't because it had never been looked at, you know, where the buildings fall. At first, it's never been apparent until this was submitted where the the 250 foot shoreline zone setback is the actual dimension. And until you see the buildings on it and where the commercial activity is, I don't think anyone actually knew. You know what part of the activity, how much, if any, was actually going to be in the shoreline zone. So now that we have that better defined and you can do some math. You know, based on the actual area, I think the answer becomes fairly clear. I'd also just point out that, you know, with the last application that was with this board before I was involved in April of 2018, so three years ago on the other side. This was the same answer that the board reached in April of 2018 was that the combined uses required shore frontage, combined shore frontage and area. And when it went to the Board of Appeals in June of 2018, the applicant at that point withdrew the request for the residential use and tried to go strictly with the the commercial use. And obviously, in the end of that, it didn't didn't get them around the issue. But this is the same issue that that plagued the application in April of 2018.
Yep.
Hey.
Yeah, one thing I would say, and this is was part of the meeting last two weeks ago, discussion of they well, obviously, there's no shore frontage on the lots where the commercial use is or that they they, as far as the lot width, it just within the shoreline zone, it just has to meet the lot width within 100 feet of the water. And this is beyond 100 feet. So we don't have to worry about lot width in this case.
It's that's a good point to Rich. Thank you for helping clarify that aspect.
Yeah.
And so, so, Michael, is there anything else you wish to share with us tonight at this point relative to this opinion?
No, like I said, if if you had questions, I'd be be glad to answer them. I did see the emails from Colin Clark at DEP. Obviously, they're fairly consistent. We might differ on a couple very small things, but or maybe a little misstatement. But overall, I think the the answer is the same.
Okay. And okay, so I see Samantha, you have a question?
If I might. So if the lots across the street are separate, if that were to be residential and this side were to be commercial, if there was enough square footage to just be commercial on the side that we're applying for now. That doesn't isn't considered two uses if they're separate. Is that correct?
My, I don't know if that was directed to me, Peter, if you want me.
I guess it was directed to you. It was relative to your response.
Yeah, I think it is. Yes, thanks.
I mean, so so my take, yes, if there's only a commercial use, you don't have to combine combine the uses, you don't have to combine the area, you don't have to, you know, combine, well, you wouldn't have shore frontage on this side. The issue is you'd have to figure this out with your your engineer. I don't know that there's 60,000 square feet of area within the shoreline zone. So you might still, you'd have to do the math, you might still literally have to just move the commercial uses back out of the out of that 250 foot setback.
Yeah, that wasn't clear from our initial conversations with the planning board back in 2020, when we met prior to the application. So that's I want a clarification on that.
So Samantha, does that help answer the question that you just asked? Does Michael's response?
Yeah, I think it does. It does.
Okay, thanks. So, Rich, you had a question?
Oh, I was kind of a question comment to address it to Mike. You were indicated, it's my understanding that that's 68,000 square feet that's shown as in the shoreline. That includes the lots across the road. So it's nowhere near 68,000 square feet for the lot on the opposite side of the.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll just play I I I'm not the I'm not a surveyor engineer. I I in my memo tried to rough it out. Giving them the benefit of the whole lot on the on the opposite side of the lots we're talking about. They've got about 28,000 plus whatever is in the other lot that that I think Samantha owns. But I'm just scaling that because it's not on the plan. But that's another 20,000. So maybe you get to 48,000. All I can tell is it's probably not 60.
Well, and most importantly, it's not 100,000.
Right. And we're only talking about if if they were to, at this point, if they were to strictly go commercial. You'd still need to get to 60. So they may be getting close. But again, my math is that you probably don't get there.
Yeah, okay, I understand now.
So planning board members, we've heard from Michael and we've seen the email from DEP. So Colin Clark has provided his interpretation and is his opinion. And as Michael suggested, it's very consistent with what what the town's attorney has come up with. So at this point, since this agenda item is strictly about talking about this opinion and where we are. Are there questions that we have for the applicants that we that we want to ask now? Or are there statements we have for the applicants that we want to make sure they're clear on now? I want to make sure.
I'm not sure it's appropriate for us to be questioning the applicant at this point. I think we should focus simply on the legal opinion we have from our our attorney and and get our questions answered there. I think the time to I mean, I suspect everybody needs some time to digest this before we go back to the application. The application may even be amended in the meantime.
Right. And I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to suggest to open up this to question about the application. I was thinking about just as it pertains to what about tonight with regard to the legal opinion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received Michael's opinion and it's very thorough and very thoughtful. Not sure we agree with all of it, but I appreciate the depth that he's gone. Of course, we just got it yesterday. We want some chance to review it. We thought tonight was just to consider the legal opinion and not for us necessarily to react to it or or beyond that. So we will sure be taking a closer look at it. And my anticipation, Mr. Chairman, was this would be the full application, if you will, would be put on the next agenda. And we'll certainly be prepared to deal with it at that point.
I would agree. It will be at a later time, not tonight, right? So certainly not tonight. Thank you. Make sure we heard the legal opinion. And in context, we've heard also or seen the opinion from DEP. So just wanted to make sure we've stated those things. So that it's clear to everybody what we're looking at.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Is there anything else? Thank you, George, for helping guide us on this. I appreciate that. Keeping us on the right path. Okay, Michael, anything else before you have to head off to another meeting?
No, the miracles of Zoom, I can be in Belgrade and Wilton. Planning board meetings within about, you know, 45 minutes of each other. So but and cognizant of the the town's budget, I I'll check off unless sign off unless somebody else needs me.
Okay, George has a comment or question?
Yeah, it's more of a comment. And it's really to just reiterate what Rich said. I appreciate how clearly you drafted this for us. I'm hopeful that we can use this in similar cases in the future. And not have to, one, bother you, two, chew up the town's legal budget. And, you know, I think this should give us a good basis for dealing with, I mean, this is the third time we've had to deal with the minimum lot size. Standard in the shoreline zoning and and hopefully, you know, three is the charm and we'll finally get it. So I appreciate that, Mike. And Peter, you know, a suggestion. I was hoping Anthony would be here, but I wonder if we shouldn't create some kind of little, I don't know, library for reference library for lack of a better phrase of these opinions, so that we all have access to them for when we're we're reviewing future applications rather than each of us having to rely on our own haphazard pile of papers at home.
Right. It's a great point. And I believe I can't speak with authority, but I see a phone number that might be Anthony's down here. He said he was going to try to call in. So I believe that is him.
I think it is.
Yeah. So we can make sure to ask and it's been it's been minuteed and it's part of this recording. So that's a great idea to 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 memorialize things like this for future use. That's that's how we get better rather than relying on no core memory, at least in my part, can't speak for anybody else. So let's do that. So idea. I think with that, Michael, thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Sorry about all the
Okay. So are we all set to move on to order of business, which is item B subdivision? This is for Mr. Desmond, who they see Bill, there you are.
Hey, there.
Hey, how are you doing?
Good, thanks.
Great. Um, so you've you've done some things right up there. And have you been in contact with Gary about your application?
Yep.
Done everything? Okay, so so Gary, can you hear me? Okay.
I can now.
Yes, sir. Hey, hear you. Glad to glad to hear you. Do you want to help us out where we are with this particular application?
You had asked him to provide you some new material, some difference, something in addition to what he had originally gave you.
Okay.
Yeah, that was. You want me to jump in or no? Yeah, go ahead, because I don't know if I have it in front of me. Yeah. We had to get the hydro geological survey done, which is done and you should have. And then there was some concerns about water level in other areas on the lot. And I was asked to get an opinion from Al Hodson on that. So I did and provided that letter. And then the only other thing was to get just to make it easier. You guys did not have in a small manageable size, the updated maps.
I got a question of Peter.
Yep. Bill, first of all, thank you very much for supplying that information. That is helpful. Thank you for all that effort. Great. You had you had something?
Yeah, I don't can't remember for sure, but the fact that we needed this other information. Did we conclude that we didn't have a complete application and we needed this or we had a but we need other stuff submitted to, you know, kind of as a condition or whatever?
My recollection is that we did not have a complete application and I believe this now does complete the application.
And so that was that was my thinking too, Rich, that we did this to consider it complete.
Yeah, okay. And the other the other thing goes with the we probably obviously did not have the public hearing for this. At least.
To my recollection, there's been no public hearing. Yes. If I remember correctly. Maybe this is part of what's on page two, I think, Bill, of your application, you listed several of the butters. So you list Lloyds hazlet and John Endicott, for example. Are those the only only butters that we would have to that would have to be notified in such a case?
I thought they were because they were at the meetings. I can remember them being at the original meetings, but I'm questioning whether we didn't have the public hearing already.
So so maybe we did.
Yeah, that's that's right. That's why I asked. Now, I don't know if we can have a public hearing, so to speak, before we have a complete application, but I know they were notified. You know.
And they were at the meeting.
Yeah.
You're looking at the ordinance real quick on page 12. It appears to me that the public hearing is at our discretion. And because in paragraph F, it reads, if the board decides to hold a public hearing, it shall hold the hearing within 30 days of receipt of a complete application. And shall public notice and all that kind of stuff. And let's see, there's something else here. Yeah. Oh, before that, upon determination that the complete application has been submitted for review, the board shall, remember, this is a a minor subdivision. It isn't a major subdivision. The board shall issue a dated receipt to the subdivider. The board shall determine whether to hold a public hearing on the final plan application. Yeah. Like it's not mandatory, it's at our discretion.
Yeah.
And they were notified and they were at the meeting.
Yes, very good point, Craig.
So should we vote on that or should just do we put a motion to vote on that?
I think we want to go that way, Sarah, but I think just framing this in such a way that we know that we're looking at what we think is now the complete application, right? We wouldn't have made determination until we know that part first, right?
Yeah. So we need to vote on that first.
Agreed. And I think that's our foundation.
Yeah. And and, you know, trying to answer Craig's question, I guess the question comes to my mind is, were the butters notified by the town that this would be on the agenda tonight? So that they would have the option to attend if they so wished.
My thinking is that they were recollection by the town.
For this meeting tonight?
Oh, oh, I know. I was referring to the one in which boys hazlet was part of it.
Right. Yeah, no, I remember her being there.
Notified.
Right, yeah. I the only reason I raise that is, you know, in the event that they have something to to say, you know, or opinion to express.
Well, they already did. They were already notified and they already did.
Now, I got a quick question.
Have a final application to see.
That's right. That 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 will be my point that now that the application was complete, there's more information that they should be supposed to, or at least we should let them look at and they move from there. But they should be invited to see the complete application, just as a formality, I will say, that'd be my opinion. But I don't know what is the protocol that been done in the past.
Go ahead, Rich. I'm sorry, Craig. Craig had something to say.
Additional information just supports the application even more. So why do we have to keep dragging shit out? And keep note of, you know, they're already notified, they already had to say they know what's going on. So this little bit of information that we got just supports us application more. So why do we have to continuously notify about us? You know, they have a responsibility themselves to pay attention as well.
Yep, good point. Rich?
Oh, I was gonna it it's kind of, well, I see Gary's on. I didn't know whether Gary or the town office staff could tell us whether they were notified. They were as a mood issue.
Right.
Give me a minute. Again, I'll have to ask Sheila.
Okay. But I understand, or at least, you know, Craig's comment that at the same time is how do they know it's even on the agenda if they aren't notified? But then again, you can say well, it's up to them to keep an eye on the town's website as to what's happening.
That's been used before. And, you know, it can be a continuous public hearing. We already, they already invited them once.
Yeah.
I mean, the public hearing thing is getting a little out of hand because people, it can seems to go meeting after meeting after meeting. And people are spending money to be here. And we need to put out, you know, one public hearing, you say what you have to say, and you're done. The way the town lawyers handled it a while back on another situation, you had one chance to say something and you were done.
We did not notify him of this meeting. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Gary. Thanks. Got heard you. Um, so so there's there's something there. And I hear what you're saying, Craig. Are we in agreement, though, that we we should be looking to formally recognize that Mr. Desmond has submitted of the application that we're considering a full application? As right? Okay, so if we're at that spot, we've asked Bill to submit this supportive information, which I believe he has done in good faith and we have in front of us, I believe. Gary, have we missed anything that we've asked him to submit?
Not to my knowledge. No, it looks like he's provided what you asked.
Okay. Other planning board members, are we in agreement or looking for consensus? Because if we're census, I would be looking for a motion.
I had to retreat myself from it because I was not in the in the original submission of this application. But the only comment I have is that since the application is complete and the border should be informed of it. That's my point. I don't know how these have been handled before. But I don't think I can vote on this one because I was no part of the original application.
Okay.
I, Sarah, thank you. I I I think that makes good sense that you would not be part of this one. I don't know if other have other opinions about that, but
I would agree myself that certainly can participate, I think, in questions and discussion. But when it comes to the vote, if she wasn't part of the original one, I think it's, and if we got a quorum, it's it's not worth providing a decision that somebody could challenge based on that.
Yeah, well, I believe and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Desmond, you met with us at twice, I believe, previous to tonight.
At least three.
At least three. Okay, I knew you would remember better than I. I, Peter, I would make a motion to find the application complete, the subdivision, a minor subdivision application complete.
A second.
Thank you for a motion and second. Any more discussion on this motion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. So I'm going across the top of your, so George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. So it's four in favor, one abstain, right? Sarah accused herself from this oh, which I think is appropriate. So this is deemed complete. Now, where are we next? What's our next thing? This is a minor.
Peter, I have a question. I just can't remember and I don't have this in front of me, but we've we've received documentation of the notifications to the butters, right? I know Lloyds was at the one of the first couple of meetings, but I don't remember who else the butters are and whether they attended or not. I don't recall any of that, but I'm just
First, if I may, the first one, a couple of them were there and I was looking over the information that came with the Zoom link and I saw the you know, the green card from the mails, mailers were in there. So you should have that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Desmond.
We so we just had, we had just had a discussion which we never concluded on or whatever is the whether or not we should or required, I guess, to notify the landowners of this meeting. And I don't know if we need to act on that or just proceed. And Sarah raised that issue.
Yep. From a process perspective, that would be a good thing to make sure we're ironed out and clear on. For a minor subdivision. As was pointed out, I'm sorry, I'm talking down, as was pointed out, it's left to our discretion. Let's see, no, wait.
Is it the public hearing that's left to our discretion or?
Right.
Yes, page 12, I think.
Unlike a major subdivision where it isn't, it's mandatory. This is discretionary. My personal feeling on this is the because this is a minor subdivision and because with the exception of the hydrogeologic investigation results, all the all the other issues were addressed previously that I'm not sure there's much to be gained by a public hearing.
I agree.
And the hydro, in the case of the hydro geological investigation, as Craig implied or said. And, and the hydro, in, in the case of the hydro geological investigation, as Craig implied or said outright, uh. Previously, it, it shows that, you know, the ordinance standard, uh, for nitrate nitrogen discharge at the property line is going to be. Most likely met. So, um. You know, that's, that. Not a, not a threat to neighbors' wells, which would be the major concern.
Uh, Peter?
Go ahead, Rich.
Real quick, uh, there was a question asked about the abutters and who they were. I, I note in the packet. Uh, the, uh, notification had been sent to John Endicott. Bernice Cardiff and Lloyd Hazlett. Just. Mention who, who I think the town thought were the butters.
And, um. So just to ask this out outright, is that everybody that we would need to based on the surrounding properties and what the ordinance says? Because if I'm, I'm thinking if, if that covers everybody. I, I don't see any problem just moving on.
Yes.
I don't know that there's a requirement for a hearing. In this case.
I guess, Peter, just to. Be clear, uh, I guess I'll make a motion that, um. On not to hold a public hearing.
I would second that.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor and seconded. And my only discussion point, I don't want to drag this on, I just want to make sure we're all thinking clearly, right? Nobody else that should have been notified, right? Based on, I'm looking at the map, right, that Bill submitted and I can see, um, Lloyd should be across the street and John's behind the property. Um, let's see. Roberts, Joanna and Jack, you not be? Is that right? Help me out, people. And then. And we, we need not worry about now or formerly John Wood or anything, anybody over there? They're on, like, uh. Either end. Sarah?
I just, I don't know if I can do this, but I will ask politely to Mr. Desmond. Do you, do you think there will be any problem with the borders at all? You. We closed all, all the package today and let you loose to move on with the subdivision?
I'm not aware of any issues, no. I know, uh, the only one who seems to have had a fair amount of interest has been Lloyd Hazlett, but. She's also been over picking berries on my property with permission and we seem to have a great relationship and there hasn't been any. Animosity or any concern that I know of.
That's great, that's good, that's. Good information, thank you.
Sure.
And I, I would just point out that, um. She was, as said, stated earlier, I think at the last meeting we had. Yeah, after being notified and I don't remember that she raised any issues or questions at all. Um, I don't think she said anything, just listened in.
Yeah, that's my reaction as well.
Might as well on all three meetings, if that helps.
It does, thank you. So getting back to my question. Do we or do we not have to worry about Joanna or Jack Roberts or John Wood on either end there in terms of? Are they out? Are they not considered a butters or not?
I, I don't know where they are, uh, in terms of, I don't have the lot map in front of me or anything.
I'm, I'm looking on page seventy of the pack, package and this, this is the map that was supplied. Like it's the plan of land owned by Bella Casa. It shows the.
Oh, oh, I, yeah.
Three lots.
I mean, they're, they're clearly a butters. Just, I, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that they're butters. I thought they were notified, though.
I think they all were notified. I sat down with, I believe it was Nick at the town and we went through. Everybody that I had to notify and they gave me. Uh, addresses and everything right off the town records to send stuff to, so.
Okay.
I'm looking in my packet right now to find the. Receipts, see if I can find them.
Maybe what had happened was the people that were notified. Are names that are more updated than what is listed on what I'm seeing on the map, right? That's a possibility.
Yeah.
Like five different families, I think, Bill, or six?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm trying to find that, it's a little disheveled here.
That's okay. And, and believe me, I'm in agreement with, with. The direction where this is going, I just want to make sure. I'm not, we are not missing something for the sake of convenience, that's all.
Absolutely.
As we know, Lloyd and, and, um, John were notified and I know you listed off some other people. Or maybe Rich did, somebody did.
What page was that map on?
Craig, on my PDF, it says page seven of fifty.
Page seven?
Yes, sir.
Did you say this, that they toward the back of the packet? Or the?
On, on my package is page seven, Rich, so it's not far, seven of, of fifty.
You know, Peter, looking at the, uh, original application, the form itself. Lloyd Hazlett and John Endicott are listed as a butters on the, the version I have, so your question is probably quite relevant.
And, and I think the answer comes with the green cards that show where, which are notified.
Yeah, you guys may, so I have three receipts here. And that would cover. Endicott. Now or formerly John Wood on both sides and Lloyd Hazlett across the street. Okay.
Okay, good. If, so probably Mr. Wood were. Was just not happen to be listed on, on the application, it looks like.
I think maybe you don't have the updated, I believe, the second meeting that was picked up on and I had to come in and amend it.
Okay.
There was a couple of things you wanted, you guys had wanted me to add to that application that. I added.
Yeah, that, that, that's likely, Mr. Desmond.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and so, so it sounds like Mr. Wood has got property on, on either side, is that?
Both sides, yes.
Sides, okay, so. To me, that answers that question from what we're talking about. So I, I am very satisfied in knowing that any or all the butters that would have been notified in any process like this have been notified in the past. And. That's all I just wanted to make sure we, we did that. Um. Getting back to Craig's point, now we have a motion on the floor that's been made and seconded. And are there any other discussion points about, uh, this? If not, we'll vote, so going across the top. George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so that's four, none opposed, one abstain. Right, so that's, that's to. Say that we do not need a hearing. So can we make progress next? Where are we with the next part? I'm looking at page twelve for the submission parts. Sorry. That's it, right? It's it for minor, there's nothing else. Before we get into.
I, I think the next operable paragraph, like, you know. Others should correct me if they think otherwise or think I'm wrong, but. Is G on page twelve, uh, within thirty days of a public hearing or within sixty days of receipt of a complete application, the latter being the case here. Based on this latest vote. If no. Hearing is held or within another time limit as may be otherwise mutually agreed to by the board and the sub divider. Uh, the board shall make findings of fact on the application. And approve with conditions or deny the final plan. The board shall specify in writing its findings of fact and reasons for any conditions of denial. And then under six point three, it talks about, you know. What we need for the final drawings, you know, the Mylar and all that.
Right.
But, but we do need to make findings of fact and I don't know if we have a form for that or not, but, um.
Yeah.
Because this ordinance is so. Ancient, um, and antiquated, um. The review criteria in the ordinance are inconsistent with what's in the, in state law. State laws actually, um, differs and so. Um, I believe we're going to have to use the review criterion state law because that trumps the ordinance, the outdated ordinance.
And, okay, so, so would the state law cover, so I'm under six dot three A. Right, then going over to page thirteen where we have items one through twelve.
Um, yeah, um, so. Yeah, no, uh, in terms of what's in the application or we require an application, I think. I, I gotta tell you, this is, you know, uh. It's been so long since I've done one of these that. People should, uh. Make their own judgments, but I think what's required in the application in six point three in terms of submissions. It, it is what the ordinance requires, you know, and Mr. Desmond's provided all that information. With the exception of the Mylar and all that final drawing stuff.
Actually, you have all that.
Oh, we have the Mylar as well, that's right. You know what? I asked you this question last time, didn't I?
That's okay.
It was a long time ago.
I, I apologize for the failure of my brain cells.
I don't know how you would remember that.
So on page twenty seven are the performance standards and the general standards. And those are the ones that, um. Wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm giving you a wrong reference. Give me a minute, Peter.
Sure. Because, so what, what I'm looking for, um, so in our current ordinance bill. For the minor subdivision, there's a section that talks about submission requirements. And, but then it just sort of ends, if it was a major subdivision, the ordinance talks about submission requirements. Then it also talks about in more detail. The, the final plan for major subdivisions. And, and. Something more about the final approval and filing. So the minor subdivision, a smaller category of, of actions that goes on, it just sort of ends. That's where we're coming up with, kind of scratching my head, I haven't done a minor subdivision, I don't know if it's been fifteen years since we've been, it's been a long time. So from a process perspective, just trying to land on something that we could say, oh, this is what we're going to go by. Tell you that this is what we're going to go by, so there's no surprises for you.
Sure.
And it's been a long. Thank you. George, did you find a reference?
Yeah, uh, um. You know, this isn't the best organized by any means. But be that as it may, under article one on page four, starting in, um, one point one. That, those are the equivalent of review criteria and no doubt were consistent with state law at one point in time back in the nineteen eighties. But, um. I was a much younger man then and much better and these are about where I am today. They're ancient and not very fit.
Yep. Yeah, because this certainly resembles the findings of fact type of things we'd be asking.
Yeah. And, and so what I was mentioning earlier, um. The, um. State law has a, a, a steer, a series of review criteria that differ from this, um. And to proceed what's in this old ordinance and I, I think that's what we're going to have to use, um. But that's my opinion, not, you know, anything more than that.
Okay. And, and so, so from a process perspective. It, we. I think what we're looking at are. Review criteria like what we're finding on page four under. Under article one purpose. But. We know that there is new state law, which. Probably points to many of these same things, I'm not sure if there are additional things. Right, but they would be going through.
Yeah.
Um, so that's one thing, right? The other thing is, is. Is, uh, see for minor, if. Desmond had submitted all this material that, that was outlined on page twelve and thirteen. Right, if we have, if he submitted all that. It would be just making sure we can go through those basically findings of fact type of thing based on state law. And would have to have a way to document that. Typically, we've been using a form that we've come up with for other instances, right?
So, Peter, be, go, go ahead, Rich, why don't you go first?
Just say, we don't, we don't have apparently an up to date formal form for. Finding is a fact and stuff, correct?
I guess not for. Subdivisions, we have one for shoreline zone.
Yeah, yeah.
Virtual development review. So, um. So I'm, I'm wondering, let me just ask this, you guys tell me if I'm just crazy. Is there a way to draw on? Um, those standards that the state have? And use our own documentation process and do it like tonight? Yeah?
Peter, um, I certainly wouldn't suggest. Or even think about suggesting we delay because we don't have a form, uh, um, for an ordinance that's going to be. Hopefully repealed next. November. And so my suggestion as a process is to make the best of what we got. And to go one by one through the. Review criteria in, in, uh, state law. Um, and, you know. Have a similar kind of discussion like we do with shoreline zoning. And, um, and what the basis of our, you know, finding it's in favor or not for each one. And rely on the recording and Julie's. Uh, great capabilities and taking good minutes. To capture that, uh, because I don't know how else we can do it in a timely fashion.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree with George. We got the criteria in state law or whatever, and if we go through that best we can. And again, not just for convenience, but Mr. Desmond's been. Kind of put on the back burner, if you will, for a period of time.
Yeah, yeah. Those review criteria, but I, I don't know, the only reason I know, you know, I was able to find them is, is this booklet that we're, we've been provided as. Planning board members and I don't know if Sarah was ever provided one too, but, um. Uh, on, um, page one thirty six, um. Thirty A subsection four, four, zero, four is review criteria and I believe that's. What we're going to need to use, um, you know, and just in general. There are things like, you know. The proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution or. The proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for reasonably foreseeable needs and, um, erosion and. You know, traffic and sewage disposal and aesthetics and all that, uh, there's, um. There are twenty of them. One is clearly, uh, not in our ordinance and that has to do with, and it, it doesn't come into play here, but. Lands to liquidation harvesting, because there's a. Five-year moratorium on on being able to get subdivision approval after somebody's down a liquidation cut.
George, what page did you say you started with there?
I I'm on page one thirty-six, Rich.
Okay, I thought you said thirty-six, and I'm thinking, geez, that's. Okay.
Our apologies, I know this looks like a sausage factory, but.
So, so if I may, I just wanna make sure, check in, I I think making the best of what we have is is probably the best we can do tonight. I'd like to make sure we we um, we go forward on this if we can, but wanna make sure, Craig, are you okay that we go about it this way without? Um, we don't have an official form, but basically we're we're utilizing the standards found in state law. To on the fly develop something that would document and memorialize this for tonight. It's not perfect, but.
Yeah, I guess as long as we're not asking him to bring more stuff because of it.
No, that's definitely. It if. He's waiting on us.
Right. So yeah, I'm fine with it.
Uh, and Sarah's be is gonna come back in a second, so. Um, I just wanna turn to Julie. Julie, um, are you still with us? Maybe. I just wanna check with her, George, to see if. We're through it.
Yes, I am still with you.
Are are you okay if we do this? I I'm gonna try and take some notes, and I've basically plagiarized another. Another document and see if I can't come up with something that would be okay.
Okay, I'll try to keep up and document it well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So George, what I did is I just copied a bunch of text from another another form and just see if we can't try to apply. The skeletal part of this and then use the state law part, if that's.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea, Peter. Uh, unfortunately, I gotta leave in a couple of minutes here, um.
Ah, thank you, that's right. Rich, do you have that page?
Well, I was gonna just ask George. What's the date, what's the uh, date on your cover?
Uh. Two thousand eighteen, so it's not the most up-to-date.
Well, I, the one I've got in front of me is two thousand fourteen. And uh, subdivision stuff starts showing up on page one twenty-five when I get to one thirty-six and then something completely different. I'm trying to.
The only thing I could suggest would be for somebody to pull it up. On the internet.
Let me try. This comes from MMA. Is that correct, George?
Uh, this book is actually put together by um. Uh, Fred Misho, who used to be with State Planning Office, and it's something that he provides, I think. Gary is the one that gave gave us these.
Yeah, they come from Fred Misho.
Okay, Craig, you have one?
Yes, I do.
What year is yours?
Eighteen.
Great, can we use you? Version?
You've been anointed. That's what you get for having the paper.
One thing on mine, uh, I have twenty criteria too, so maybe, maybe it didn't change from fourteen to eighteen, but.
Yeah. It could be that some of the other laws changed, but not that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so if we do that, um, and I know, George, you have to get going cuz it's fifty-seven, um. Craig, what what I'm thinking, tell me if I'm crazy on this. We if we hit whatever like number one is, would you try and go through it like if it says. Will maintain safe and healthful conditions the board found to stand was or was not met based on. You know, and we have this language that we we've in the past, right, which was the um. Materials submitted in public record, I think, is what we've stated in the past, right?
So I select the first one is pollution. This has the proposed subdivision will not result in a undue water or air pollution and making a determination. It shall at least consider, and then it says elevation of land above sea level and its. Relation to flood plains, nature of the soils and sub soils and da-da-da. Is that why you want me to be reading?
Uh, yes.
Peter, I'm I'm gonna sign off now, could rather than doing it in the middle of the deliberations.
Okay, thank you so much, George. Really appreciate your time.
So I apologize for not being able to see this through uh to completion, but. Uh, good luck, Mr. Desmond.
Thank you and safe travels.
Yeah, thanks. We'll see you all.
Thank you, George.
Do we uh, want to uh? Just have Craig read down through these and then we make a vote on those or the.
Um, in the.
Discussion or whatever.
There are twenty, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, there are. It's a basically. Of that book, it's two and a half pages um of written material.
Okay, um. Let's see. Yeah, we we. In my opinion, we can do that. Does everybody feel comfortable with that?
I think it's the most uh. Efficient way we'll have made sure that uh the for the record, we've looked at all the criteria and voted on them.
Yep.
And if Craig doesn't wanna read them, he did a good job in the first one, uh. Uh, I could do so, but I I think Craig's did a did a great job. I numb Nick Craig to read through it.
Yeah, I'll read them, I mean.
Okay, thanks, Craig. So 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 for Mr. Desmond, what we're gonna do is read through these these items and then vote on them as a whole. We we know what most of them are cuz what what they're in our ordinance, but there are some that are in exceedance, I think.
Gotcha.
Craig. Would.
So number one is pollution. The proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution and making this determination that shall at least consider. A, the elevation of the land above sea level and the relations to flood plain. Do we wanna vote on each individual that has all the way to E? I'm, we just wanna vote on the one.
Uh, I'm thinking go through them all, and if we have a problem with one of them, we was ha- have the the board bring it up.
So.
Just go down through and uh, if we all agree, we can deal with it in one one shot.
Okay, A was the elevation of the land, B is the nature of the soils and sub soils and their ability to adequately support water disposal. C, the slope of land and its effect on its affluence. The event, D, the availability of streams for disposal of affluence. E, the applicable state and local health and water resource rules and regulations, and that's it.
I I find it interesting that one of the criteria is. The availability of streams for depose disposal of effluence. It's it's kind of like. Seems to me a contra- I know it's it's there, but seems to me we don't wanna dispose our effluence in the streams.
Correct.
But anyway, that's, I uh. Uh, I don't s- see that there's an issue here with this subdivision.
I see no issue with that particular thing on this subdivision. We know that Mr. Hodgson had supplied the letter that addressed several of the things already.
So it'd be a well-not vote.
It it would be, it will, right, it will not, was it phrased? Yeah.
Yeah, well, not.
It met the standard, um, but it will not impair those things, right?
Right.
Right.
So we can just say yes, like this.
Yeah.
Uh, can I have a question, Mr. Desmond? The lot, uh. Most southern lot, it's got some wetlands associated with it. Um, the, there's been soil tests on that lot that there's adequate land for septic system, correct?
Yep, yep, you have all of that. And then I I believe it was Mac had some concerns about additional area. For some reason, I'm not sure, um, and that's the follow-up letter, the latest letter from Al Hodgson saying that. You know, his soil tests throughout the property all indicate that the water level was uh one and a half times the standard essentially.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, go ahead, Craig.
Okay, so did we vote on that first one or?
I think.
We don't need to?
We do need to, I think, is. Uh, Peter, is that correct? We need to go through a roll call vote on those?
Yeah, we have roll call vote, so uh, Rich?
Uh, yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, sets three in favor, uh, none opposed. Uh, Sarah is recusing herself from voting in this case cuz she was not part of the original discussion. It's correct, Sarah? Hey. All right, so I'm just trying to make some notes.
Yeah. Yes, I'm recusing myself.
Thank you. Next, Craig.
Two, sufficient water. The proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for the reasonable foreseeable needs of the subdivision.
I would make a motion that the subdivision, proposed subdivision has sufficient water available.
Um, I don't, I don't, uh, thank you for that, Rich. I I think that since we're talking about findings as in fact and conclusions of law. Um, it, as we've done it in the past, as we hit these items, we can vote on each one rather than making a motion, right? You think?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay, we just, yeah.
Right? Right, so and and then to hit those standards up, so we're saying that that there sufficient water um does exist is the way we're phrasing it, correct?
Yes.
And we found no reason to think that is not sufficient, right? Um, so roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Uh, Craig?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so that's three in favor, none opposed, one abstain. This is based on applications submitted in public record.
Okay, number, ready? Number three, municipal municipal water supply. The subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on an existing water supply if one is to be used.
I think that's not applicable in this case, is it? Uh, town doesn't have a municipal. Uh, water supply.
Um. I would agree, I would agree. And Craig, wording on that was sufficient water supply, that it would not result in an impact to?
Unreasonable burden. Just on an existing water supply.
So we're saying, uh.
It will not cause an unreasonable. Burden.
Right? And Richard suggested that perhaps it's not applicable cuz there is no um public water supply. Uh, in agreement there, or do we do we just simply wanna vote and say it it will not cause an unreasonable?
Yeah, well. We can vote on it uh without the N A. I mean, the 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 heading says municipal water supply, so. In my mind, that's what we're talking about, but the actual language doesn't make it explicit that it's a municipal water supply, but. We could vote on it and that way we.
Were covered.
Rather than deal with N A or whatever.
Okay, I'm with you. So in favor that it's not gonna cause an unreasonable burden on the existing water supply, so Rich?
Yes.
And Craig?
Yes.
I'm in favor, so that's based on the applications submitted in public record, three in favor, none opposed, one abstain. But I'm almost there, Craig. I'm sorry. It's just taking a minute. Okay, next.
Number four, erosion. The proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or a reduction in the land's. Capacity to hold water so that it dangerous or unhealthy conditions result.
Okay, um. Have we seen anything to convince us that it would have an impact on erosion?
Now, it's a flat law.
Yeah. Um, therefore, those in favor saying that this will not have an adverse impact on erosion, Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
I too am in favor, it's three in favor, uh, none opposed, one abstain. Almost there. Okay, Craig, thanks. Next.
Number five is traffic. The proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion. Or unsafe conditions with res- respect to the use of the highways or public roads existing in the proposed and. If the proposed subdivision requires driveways or entrances. Onto a state or state aid highway located out of the urban compact area. Of an urban compact municipality as defined and titled twenty-three, section seven fifty-four. The Department of Transportation has provided documentation indicating that the driveways of the entrance conform to title twenty-three, section seven oh four. And any rules adopted to that's under that section.
Thank you, Craig, um.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask about, was there gonna be a driveway entrance permit or something on this one?
I think that you're in a packet.
Okay, great, going on memory, so.
Correct, Bill?
Yeah, they're there.
Yep.
Okay, so if we have the driveway entrance permit, was there anything to suggest that that would cause congestion in this area?
No.
Therefore, in favor, Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so that's three in favor, none opposed. Um, one abstain. Okay, next.
Sewerage disposal. The proposed subdivision will will provide for adequate sewage, waste disposal, and will not cause an unreasonable burden on municipal services. If they are utilized.
And if I remember correctly, these, what the submission material talks about private well, a private um. Waste disposal, correct?
Correct.
So is there anything to suggest that that this would not provide adequate uh?
No, no.
Whatever you call it. Okay, therefore, those in favor. Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so. That's. Three in favor, none opposed. Uh, next up, Craig, thanks for getting us through this too.
Municipal, this is number seven, municipal solid waste disposal. The propo- proposal, yeah, now I'm gonna start stuttering. The proposed subdivision. Will not cause an unreasonable burden on the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste. If a municipality services are utilized.
Okay. So um, this is a private residence. I didn't, I saw nothing. In the application that would talk to contributing to a burdensome, a burden on the municipality. Did anybody else see anything?
Uh, the three, three residential lots, I can't imagine.
I can't either. It's it's just a question though, so we have to ask it.
Yep.
So, uh, those in favor stating that this will not cause a burden on the municipality, so. Relative to a solid waste disposal, Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
I to him in favor, so it's three in favor and opposed, one abstain. What's up next, Craig?
Number eight, uh, aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. The proposed subdivision. The proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect. On the scenic or natural beauty of the area aesthetics, histor- historic sites, significant wildlife habitat. Identified by the Department of Land and Fisheries and Wildlife. Or the municipality or rare erasable. Irre- irreplaceable natural areas or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shorelines.
Okay, so the application material did not talk, because the last phrase was shorelines, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this application's nowhere near the shore. If any other, um.
Yeah, the, the, one thing they addressed was the. Uh, deer wintering yard or potential deer wintering yard, which Kiel Kempers letter indicated that that's. Not something they're concerned about, uh.
Hey. So relative to natural values, um, that I think that has been addressed in cultural things. As, unless we have a dash definition to say that what is being proposed would be, um, antithetical to an aesthetic thing. I'm not aware of a definition that we have, right? Um, so those in favor that this is, uh, this would meet that, not be a problem, so. Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And I two him in favor based on. Public record, okay, great, what is next?
Number nine conformity, conformity with the local ordinance and plans. The proposed subdivision conforms with a duly adopted subdivision regulation and ordinance. Comprehensive plan, development plan, land use plan, if any. And making this determination, the municipal. Municipal reviewing authority may interpret these ordinance and plans.
Okay, so in terms of conformance with other plans or conformity with other plans. Um, was there anything that we have seen so far that would say that it would not be in conformance with other plans?
No.
I can't think of anything, uh. This is part of the. On the very edge of, um, depot area. It's at the top of Hill, it's flat. I can't think. It's a residential area. Anybody?
I. Don't see anything myself, uh. I think it's in conformance with the, the not minimum lot size ordinance. That would be the big issue for me if it didn't.
Right, there's, um.
Not in the shoreline zone.
Right. Yep. Uh, may I just ask a question on that, um? Uh, so Mr. Desmond, um, as I'm looking at, let's see. And I don't have a problem, I just want to make sure I understand. The, there's a delineated wetland on the, um, that'd be like the, uh.
Southern most lot.
Yeah, southern lot. Um, and you had had, you had had, uh, uh, an amount that was. Dash lines showing it delineated, is that correct? So of that which is left, after you subtract the wet area. Just, I just, I'm just curious, how much is left that would allow a person to build?
Uh, you should have a letter there from, uh. Uh, K and K land surveyors, let me see if I can find it here. Because that was one of the questions that came up last time.
Hey, I remember we talked about it.
Let's see if I can find it. If not, I have it in an email somewhere. It wasn't super formal. He sent me an email showing me the math and signed it.
One thing Peter, while he's looking for that is that I reviewed the. Uh, minimal lot size ordinance. One of my concerns was when I was looking at that. Uh, I was wondering whether we needed to deduct the wetland from the lot size. And I didn't find anything. In either the minimum lot size ordinance or the subdivision ordinance, says you need to deduct that from. You know, as calling, it may be unbuildable, it may or may not be, but, uh, it listed. Uh, below the normal high water line. Uh, it, put it this way, it did not say anything about deducting wetlands, um. Normal high water line or upland edge of a wetland would, would imply to me that we can't count the wetland toward a lot size, but. The fact that it doesn't say wetlands, it says normal high water line.
Gotcha.
And it's a forested wetland, as I, uh, recall. Uh, you can get a permit from D E P. For certain amount of it, you could fill without a permit. I think there's a certain criteria or certain limit on what. You need to get a permit by rule for a permit for whatever. But anyway, Mr. Desmond, you find whatever you're looking for?
I did, yeah. Actually, what he did is he, he deducted the wetlands and also, I believe it was Mac, had a concern about the gravel road, so he deducted both. And that leaves us with one point four five seven acres.
Okay, alright, so, so even if it, if. One could deduct the delineation of the wetland from a thing, this would still meet the minimum. Right, so that's, oh, okay. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure we talked about it, um. Based on that, because Rich, I was thinking about that same thing for another particular thing, so not Mr. Desmond's.
Yeah, yeah.
But it came up this weekend and, and another off topic thing. Uh, so based on this, um, is there anything to say that this would not conform with other plans that we have? This, this is what we're getting at, so.
I would say not.
Right, so that it is in conformance, as far as we can tell, based on the application to middle and public record. If that were the case, uh, those in favor saying that this application is in conformance with other plans to the best of. So Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And I agree, so that's three in favor, none opposed, one abstain, um. What is next? I think it's number ten.
Number ten, and this one's not in our ordinance, uh, financial and technical capacity. The subdivider has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards of this section.
Um, so that's a great point, that it's not in our ordinance, um, at this time, um, so, uh. Is there any, let me just say it this way, is there anything to suggest that what Mr. Desmond has presented would? Allow us to conclude that he's not financially capable nor technically capable of meeting this ordinance?
I'd say no, because it's so small.
Yeah, that and, uh, a question I'd have of Mr. Desmond. Do you plan to build on the, uh, other two lots or are you planning to sell the other two lots?
Uh, the current plan is to sell the other two lots.
Mm-hmm. If that particularly is the case, uh, at point, uh, I'm not sure there's a whole lot. That in terms of cost. Uh, that would go along, you know, that Mr. Desmond would have, uh, that would be sub- substantial anyway. He's got his permits for the driveway and if he sells the lots, he's not gonna be the one. Doing the work and so anyway, I, I don't see there being a problem with it.
Okay, thank you. And it seems, it seems like based on what he's told us, um, so far. I'd have no reason to question the ability to meet that. If it were a very complex, large thing that required huge investments, I mean huge. Different fa- different view, but.
No, no, no roads being built or whatever.
Right, so, um, uh, so let me just ask the board members this, so, um. So for this standard, I'm just, just for tonight, I'm trying to document as we go along, so that we're saying that, that, uh, that. It will, he will be able to meet, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yep, okay, so let's, so, so thank you, I just wanted to phrase it the correct way. So the fact that he could meet this would be in favor of, so Rich?
Yes.
And Craig?
Yes.
I have no reason to object, so that's three in favor, um, none opposed and one abstain. Next up, eleven.
Number eleven, surface water outstanding river segments. When, whatever situated entirely or partially within the watershed of a. Any pond or lake within two hundred feet of a, any wetland. Great pond or river as defined in title eight thirty-eight, chapter three, subchapter. One, article two B. The proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality of that body of water or unreasonable effect on the shoreline of that body of water. A, when lots in the subdivision have frontage on an outstanding river segment. The proposed subdivision plan must require principal structures to have a combined. Lot shore furniture setback of a normal high water mark of five hundred feet.
This is not on an outstanding river segment for sure, and the rest of that paragraph. Deals with outstanding rigor- river segments. Do we need to continue reading or can we just stop there?
I would say, and I, or, or, yes, whatever.
I, I think what you've read so far covers that particular, I'm like, you know, just trying to save a little time.
Right, so, um, I'm thinking it's, 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 um, he's not near a river, not near surface water. I would say that he is not to unreasonably impact them.
Well, I would say too, uh, it, it clearly is not an N A for the whole paragraph because it's. Within the watershed of a great pond, but I don't see this being an issue.
Neither do I, so we'll do a roll call vote, so saying that this will not unreasonably impact those surface waters in, in a. River shed. And by the way, for everybody's awareness, Mr. Desmond. I'm saying this from, from my perspective, because if anybody were to ask about whether or not you're in a river shed, we all are in some river shed. And there are eyes on all these, all these applications, that's why I'm trying to make sure we are. So, thanks, so Rich?
Uh, yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And I too am in favor saying that this will not have unreasonable impact on surface waters in this river shed. So that was number eleven, um, Craig, we're on twelve.
Number twelve, groundwater. The proposed subdivision will not. Alone or in conjunction with the existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater.
I'm thinking myself that that, uh, report, uh. Uh, basically saying that the nitrogen, uh, issue for the septic systems will not create problems. About the only thing I could see residentially that could affect the groundwater.
Right, and, um. I'm not a geologist, but, um, in other parts of the town, there are places where you've got specific sand. Groundwater aquifers that are of special significance. Clearly not in one of those, right, because.
Yep.
With rocks just beneath him. To the best of my knowledge, I would not have any reason to think that this would have an impact on, an unreasonable impact on groundwater. Does anybody else see? See something that would obstruct this or?
No.
So those in favor that saying that this would not reasonably, unreasonably, I'm sorry, impact groundwater. So, Rich?
Uh, yeah, I vote, yes, it will not have.
Right, thank you Craig.
Yes.
And I too, saying yes, it will not unreasonably impact those things. That's three in favor, none opposed, one abstain, onto thirteen.
Flood areas. Based on the Federal Emergency Management Agency's flood boundaries and floodway maps. The flood insurance rate maps and information presented to the applicant. Applicant, whether the subdivision is in a flood prone area. The sub, if the subdivision or any part of it is in such an area, subdivider shall determine the hundred foot, hundred year flood. Elevation and flood hazard boundaries within the subdivision. The proposed subdivision plan must include a condition of plant approval requiring that the. Principal structures in the subdivision will not be constructed within the lowest floor. Including the basement at least one foot above the hundred year flood elevation.
Thanks Craig, so, uh, I'm not trying to be flippant, but if we have flood areas up at the top of this hill, we've got other problems, right? So, um, based on the elevation of this proposed thing, um, we do know that upland areas can temporarily. You know, have problems, but, and this is relatively flat, but does anybody have any reason to think that this? Would be a problem for?
No.
No.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, so, uh, so in favor that this will not, uh, be a. Not unreasonably impact flood areas, I guess, as we were saying it. So Rich?
Yes, it will not.
Yes, it will not, right, Craig?
Yes.
I too say, yes, it will not have an unreasonable impact. Um, so that's three in favor, none opposed, one abstain. Uh, next up, number fourteen.
Freshwater wetlands. All freshwater wetlands within the print proposed subdivision. Have been identified on any maps submitted as part of the application regardless. Of the size of these wetlands. Any mapping of these freshwater wetlands may be done with the help of the local soil and water conservation district.
I, my thought on this is. The, uh. There's forested wetland on the property, but, um, there's. And it's probably not really addressed to, to forested wetlands as it is non-forested wetlands and. I don't think there's an issue here either.
Um, so, so I have a question on this one, um. In a, and this is for the board, I guess, first, but Mr. Desmond, just so you are aware of it, I'm just wondering. Um, if there are wetlands that are delineated, um, in a case like this. When, say if I'm gonna, say I'm on the playing board, I want to buy the lot next to that one south. That has the wetland delineated on it, would it be sort of buyer beware sort of a thing? Or would I turn to Mr. Desmond to look for assistance in saying, can you help me know where these things are? In other words, is it a subdivision? Thing? I don't know, I'm just asking.
I don't get why you're asking.
Yeah, I could, I'm a little unclear myself.
Uh, I'm, I'm asking, um, is it buyer beware for any lot in a subdivision? Or is it, what are those things called, like covenant sort of a thing? Where, I into it, you're, you're told, lot one is this, you can't build on this, this area.
My, my, my thinking on this is if we approve the subdivision. Uh, and Mr. Desmond sells a lot. There's no requirement, uh, it's kind of buyer beware of there's wetlands. I don't think it's up to Mr. Desmond to tell him, you have a forested wetland there and here are the boundaries to it.
Can I just say, didn't? Didn't that number fourteen that we just read state that I'm required to show those wetlands as they are? As I did?
On maps, yes, and you've.
On the map, so on the map it shows it, so anybody that was purchasing that property would get a copy of that map, I would assume. And, or do their due diligence and, and go wherever they need to go to look at that and would be able to see that pretty clearly, I would think, am I wrong?
Nope.
I think you're right, I just, just wanted to make sure we're talking about it just a little bit. I don't say this, I'm just trying to make sure we're being very clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so, um, based on what we know, is there any reason to think that whatever freshwater wetlands have been delineated? Are, how are we saying this? Craig is, is it say that they are impacted or is that they're not impacted?
Uh, have been identified.
Identified. Okay. Great.
So. And they have been identified.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Okay. So we're saying freshwater wetlands have been identified. Okay. Um, voting, Rich?
I vote that they have been identified.
Craig?
Yes.
Me too. Three in favor, none opposed, one abstain. Number fifteen.
Oh, just, alright. Well, actually I messed up. There was fourteen A, farmland. All farmland with a proposed subdivision has been identified on maps submitted as part of the application. Any map in the farmland may be done with the help of local soil and water conservation districts. There's no farmland.
No, thank you. So we're saying that farmland, um, has been identified like how? Like how the other one, it was like, what? Freshwater wetlands have been identified and what we're saying is that
There have been identified on maps, but there's no farmlands.
Yeah. It's almost like a, uh, almost a, a not applicable, but, uh, cause there, there is no farmland on the, on the maps or for, on the lot. But again, good vote that farmland has been, been identified and that's because there is none.
Yeah, we, we can say that the standard was met.
I'd vote yes.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Thanks, Rich. And then Craig?
Yes.
I too am in favor of saying that there are no, there is no farmland up there. So they have, he has met this standard. Three in favor, none opposed, one abstain. Um, are we on to fifteen?
Fifteen, river stream or brook. Any river stream or brook within their budding proposed subdivision has been identified on maps, submitted as part of the application for purposes, submitted as part of the application for purposes of this section, river stream or brook has the same meaning as in title thirty-eight, section four eighty, B subsection nine.
Hey.
Uh, I can tell you, Peter, that there was no river streamer, brook on that property.
Yep. Thank you. So those saying, those in favor of saying that this standard was met, that there are, uh, there is no river stream or brook identified. Actually, like the farmland one, right? He's met, the standard has been met because there are there are none there.
Yeah.
So Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
I do him in favor, three in favor, none opposed, one abstain. Um, next, uh?
Sixteen, stormwater. The proposed subdivision will provide adequate, adequate stormwater management.
I think, uh, my thought is the material submitted, uh, for this particular meeting, the extra additional material would cover that.
I would agree. Craig, are, are you comfortable?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So those in favor saying that this standard was met. Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
I'm in favor. So that's three in favor, none opposed, one abstain. Stormwater, um, adequate management has been met by recent submission. So thank you. And that was sixteen, correct?
Yes.
I'm not doing perfect notes. I'm just trying to get it kind of bones of it laid out so I can ship it to Sheila. Hopefully make her day a little bit easier. Seven.
Greg, seventeen, I can tell you that it doesn't apply, but I guess we better read it.
Seventeen is spaghetti lots prohibited. If any lots in the proposed subdivision have shore frontage on a river stream or brook, great pond or coastal wetland, as these features are defined in title thirty-eight, section four eighty B, none of these lots created within the subdivision have a lot depth to shore frontage ratio greater than five to one.
This one to me, Peter, is clearly not applicable because there are none of those things on the lot. But we can vote again if you want, uh, it's certainly not going to affect them, affect something that's not there.
Okay, great. We will, just one second. We're saying that this standard was met as none, none being spaghetti lots are proposed. Is that okay?
The more I think it's more the issue of none of the natural resources, if you will, river streamer book, brook occur on the property.
Wait.
Spaghetti lots either, but.
Okay. So is there something, Rich, you want me saying here about? I, I was kind of focused on spaghetti lots that saying that none are, none of the spaghetti lots are being proposed.
Right.
So is that sufficient to state it this way that?
It is, yeah.
Okay, great. So those in favor, Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
I to him in favor, three in favor, none opposed, one abstain. Uh, how about number eighteen?
Late phosphorus concentration. The long-term commute, communicative effects of the proposed subdivision will not unreasonably increase the great ponds phosphorus concentration during construction phase and life of the proposed subdivision.
Make you.
And that was a will not.
It will not in reasonably impact that. So do we get, I'm sorry, do we get information saying that it would not?
I think we do have information in the packet. And I would say it, it says during the construction phase and life of the proposed subdivision, I think we'd have to, you know, it may be that, that I guess we're talking about the construction of the lots. I mean, the construction of the subdivision, if you will, versus the construction on the individual lots. Desmond sells the lots. He's not going to be the one dealing with the construction. Uh, so I think we need to look at it in terms of the creation of the subdivision, more so than the individual lots. I don't see that, uh, there is a, uh, phosphorus concentration, uh, problem with the creation of these lots.
I, I would agree and, um, the other, one of the places where we would see that if there were roads being, you know, proposed to be built, right? Cause you'd have transportation phosphorus with
Yeah.
earth that goes down somewhere. And we're not seeing it as a proposed part and the conditions of the lots and stuff don't lend itself to great runoff, you know, some things. That's my thought. I don't want to speak for anybody else.
Uh, just for reference, there is a letter from Al Hudson basically stating the same thing too.
Very good point. Thank you for bringing that up, which is only more supportive of this idea that it would not reasonably impact um, the phosphorus concentration in a great. So those in favor stating that the standard is met. Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
I would say yes. So three in favor, none opposed, one abstain. Okay. Thanks, Craig. We on to nineteen now?
Impact on adjoining municipality. For any proposed subdivision that crosses municipal boundaries, the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable traffic congestion or unsafe conditions with the respect to the use of existing public highways and adjoining municipality in which part of the subdivision is located. And it just stops.
You know, the, and, the end is because we got number twenty coming up and that. I, I would say this is clearly an NA. There's no way this lot affects or is part of a joining another municipality.
You know, I, I would tend to agree on this one because it's just such, such an, it's just not not on the edge of the town. So.
Yeah.
Unless there are other plans that we don't know about somewhere.
Yeah. And I think number twenty is clearly in my mind, uh, in NA too. There's not this land subject to uh, liquidation harvesting. And that's not what we have here.
Liquidation. Um, so is it okay, planning board members, I wrote just NA for number nineteen. I'm just trying to get, get down to number twenty, uh, for liquidation. Is it called liquidation timber harvesting or liquidation harvesting?
Land subject to liquidation harvesting.
Thank you. Land subject. So is there any evidence to, to suggest that they would be, or this is just going to be NA?
I'd say, uh, they're not big enough to.
Do that, right? Craig, was there anything else in the book about?
Uh, do we need to, do we need to have a? Oh, maybe if it, we, if we put NA there, do we need any kind of vote?
For the whole thing?
Pardon me?
For the whole thing?
On the particular paragraph, number twenty or whatever.
Um.
And a, and the same would apply to nineteen. Do we have to vote that it's NA or do we just put NA on there?
In my opinion, I think we have consensus that neither of those are applicable. And it's, it's, so I don't need, in my opinion, we do not need to vote.
Okay.
Me.
Thank you, Craig.
Thanks, Craig. Appreciate that. Alrighty, um, so we've gone through the things that are found in that, that law book that, uh, will be the basis hopefully for a, a, this again will of better form. Thank you, Bill, bearing with us as we go through.
No, no problem.
Um. So, uh, that would be a conclusions of law and finding of fact. Um, is there anything else to talk about? Because I think it, we'd have to make the decision whether or not we approve this. Which we have not yet done. That's typical. Or, uh, stand by, um, I'll just say one thing. Are there any conditions of approval? I, I did not ask that. So.
I wouldn't, I don't have any particular issues, uh, that would need conditions.
Okay, um, this is leftover. I'm just going to say it anyway, because you, you guys can tell me if we should, it's not applicable, but typically a standard condition of approval to meet. This is from the shoreline zone one, so it's not, has to apply here, but it has to do with managed stormwater runoff. And I thought that we've already talked about that in the standard up above.
Yeah, we, we've already said it won't create a problem.
So, so therefore I would, I would suggest that we, um, in my opinion, let me say it this way, this standing condition need not apply in this case.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
Okay. I'm just going to make a note here. I'm sorry. Almost there. Okay. Uh, it's that one. Okay. I just put a line through all that language and then just said, the planning board determined this condition is not applicable as the standard was already meant in the application. Stated that, so, so there'd be no expectation of having to have this other issue. Therefore, I think we are into the spot where we would vote. For a decision. Does that make sense for everybody? I think. Just want to do a quick look at another one. Cause I'm using another one as an example. I just want to make sure I haven't forgotten anything. Yeah, decision. Okay. Um. So based on the conclusions of law, pardon me, and findings of fact, um, though favor of approving this subdivision, this minor subdivision ordinance. Um, I guess I take this moment to ask you to vote. Pardon me. So Rich, are you in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor of approving it.
Craig?
Yes.
I too would be in favor. Um, none opposed and Sarah is, uh, abstaining. So I'm just going to say. Is it place where I say how many? Of. Three in favor, none opposed, one abstain. Okay, the rest of this is, uh, strictly stuff like me putting in some dates and stuff. So I, I can do that without boring all you guys to death. So, um, we're all good there. Before we go any further, I don't want to rush something just for the sake of convenience. Have we overlooked anything in terms of our process? I want to make sure we're, we're not skipping over anything. We missed anything?
So we concluded that the application was complete, went down through the criteria, talked about special condition or it's conditioned to the thing and we voted on it. I think we're fine.
I think we're fine. I, I just, if anything else. I would say this, at this point, I would consider it concluded and we're moving on. So I know we started this a long time ago, uh, way back. So, thank you very much for your, your patience, Bill, with us as we go through this.
I see you working on the house still.
Yep. Totally, but surely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very good. Um, so that's good. I think we're all set to go. I think we're, we're on to our next agenda item.
Thank you guys for your time. Uh, briefly, what happens from here as far as I'm concerned? I think there was a statute I had to go in and pay a certain amount of money. Once you guys, once we voted on this.
I guess I can read that myself in the.
Something I didn't realize if that's the case.
After approval, there was some steps that I needed to take, I believe, and I.
Hang on.
I know there's a requirements about, you know, I think we've got to sign the my lawyer and we'll have to go to the town office probably to do that.
Yeah.
And you need to file it, but I didn't know, did you say you thought there was a requirement that you pay so much per lot or anything?
No, I do remember just reading in the ordinance through there that after approval, there was a procedure I had to go down. It wasn't a lot, it was a $40 fee, or maybe it was a filing fee of some sort for the, to file the maps and things.
That's probably at the registry of deeds, you may have to pay them. I don't think you have to pay the town anything.
It was in the town ordinance anyway, it was in the subdivision ordinance.
Yeah.
I think it's, think it, the heading was upon approval and then there was a, I don't have it in front of me, I was reading it online, but.
Can I read it to you? Maybe this is it, Bill?
Yeah.
So, so all applications for final, this final plan approval, final plan approval for minor subdivisions shall be accompanied by an application fee of $80, is that the one?
That sounds right.
So where I'm at, I'm on our, our ordinance page 11. So bill by check to the municipality, if a public hearing is deemed, an additional fee may be required, we had no public hearing. Okay, I think that was it, so Rich is on to the right, I think the right next steps is that I know we have to sign the, is a my lawyer and some paper that you submitted, it's at the town. And through the magic of Zoom, even though it's great, we can't sign, put a wet, you know, pen to paper on that one. So we have to do that, right? And then, then you have to, and you've done this more than we have, then you have to then go to the registry of deeds and submit to them, right? Because they need a copy of one of those pieces of paper or my law or both, right?
Yes, so you don't send those.
No, sir, okay. Aware of this would be all. All on the.
Peter.
Yes.
I think I heard Bill say that he left a full-size paper copy and a my lawyer at the town office.
Okay.
If he did, I don't know where it is.
Okay.
Because I look, what's that?
I missed what you said there, blinked out for a second.
I don't recall you leaving a my law or a full-size copy at the town office, because I didn't, I didn't see it. When, when I heard you say that, I went and looked for it and nobody seems to know where it is.
Yeah, so we got off on the wrong track from the beginning, I had understood, I guess maybe it was my misunderstanding when you and I first spoke, that I needed that for the very first meeting, so I went ahead and had them all done and then it was discovered that no, you don't need those right now, but I had them done and I believe Nick has all that.
Really?
I thought so, yeah, they were all there.
Maybe he does, but I didn't, I mean, his office was locked, so I didn't have access to his office, but I looked around and I didn't see him anywhere.
Yeah, I think he does, but I know I brought them to the, to the office or, or.
The other thing I want, yeah, the other thing I wanted to mention is the registry deed doesn't take my lawyers anymore, all it wants paper.
That's correct, and I think I remember that from, from K and K told me that, so you may not, I apologize, you may not have the my large, you just have the papers, because I think he told me that, and I questioned it, and he said, I do this more than they do, this will suffice.
Okay, that, that, that could be it, maybe Nick's got it folded up somewhere.
Yeah.
So could we just make sure that?
If I need to.
Yeah.
What's that?
If not, I can get copies if I need to.
That's fine, okay.
So Gary, as long as you're happy and Bill's happy, then I think we're good to go.
Sounds great.
Make sure.
I'm happy, we're done with this.
And Bill has paid his $80 fee, correct, with the application?
I don't think that I have, I gotta check that.
Okay, if that's what it says.
Alrighty.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Bill, really appreciate your time.
You too, appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, bye-bye now.
Take care.
Hey. Let me see if it is. Next up, Charles, thank you for your patience.
No problem, it's easier to be patient at home than it would be sitting in a meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Grateful for these last few virtual meetings.
Yeah, man. Alright, so where are we here?
The, so George isn't here, but in the copy I had sent out, I think I tried to get it out to you all at the end of May, so hopefully we've been all had a chance to kind of review the comments, not much has changed. The big things to note in this draft is I took out all of the things we had talked about before, so all these comments are fresh. These are all like the final things I believe we have to do, and most of them are, just going through them, most of them are section references, so things like, that say meets the criteria of section 10.12. D. I need to go back and finalize that, make sure that's the correct reference, and there's a few of those as well that are through here. The big question or the big change would be the appeal section, so that's, that starts on page 88. This ordinance has gone to the appeals board, the first draft that I sent them, they had a lot of comments, and they, one person on the board of appeals had remarked that they should use their ordinance, so I listened to them and grabbed their ordinance and put it into this formatting. So this appeal section is straight from the board of appeals section, has every type of variance. The appeal procedure is the same. For the board of appeal hearings, I just referred to the board of appeals hearings relate, related to this ordinance shall adhere to the standards and procedures set forth in the town of Belgrade Board of Appeals ordinance, I thought that would, we might need to put the exact language in depending on what the town attorney says. But references to other ordinances seems generally okay, so I'm not too worried about it. I don't think, since the subdivision, the planning board doesn't really deal with the board of appeals, I don't know why we would want to have a whole appeals section for this, just let the board of appeals have their own ordinance. And if there is any change to that ordinance, everything should be fine here, everything should be fine here.
Right.
That's that, there's a few, I'm trying to find the other comments. A lot of this is just going to be, how does it play out with the town office, like the administrative stuff behind it? Yeah, so if there's any questions, I'm here to answer, but for the most part, this is a pretty solid draft, I'm trying to see if there's any more of George's comments that he might want us to talk about. I'm kind of going through each page. Peter, do you, do you have any questions for me?
No, nothing specific about what we've done so far. I'm still thinking about steps and making sure we can highlight some things, because we want to make sure we talk to select board, we want to make sure we're ready for a public hearing at some point, and I'm just thinking about timelines and things like that, so. That's where I am. No specific questions.
I have a question of, Charles, I think you said the appeals thing is on a week. I may be having the wrong version in front of me with my packet, but I'm finding appeal section with what I've got is on page 93.
There's only 91 pages in this version that I, I'm looking at, the Belgrade subdivision 527 document. I don't know, I haven't put the date on the document yet, that's a learning mistake on my end. But from the most recent one that I sent out and I made sure to remind if you're looking at it in the packet, that might be an issue.
Yeah, that probably.
And that was the, Peter, that's what I clarified about earlier this week or last week. That the draft that I had sent around, that's Belgrade subdivision 527 is the most recent one after that. So those, those are the comments from the board of appeals in the packet that you received tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
And I took their comments and just copied their ordinance. Just to avoid any confusion.
Good.
And I think the reason why there's a few less pages is that we were able to finally cut a lot of the stuff that we had talked about. We had the, this, this is also the first version that introduces section. Oh, I'm scrolling a lot, sorry. Article, I think it's article nine is the final approval and filing. Let me just double check that real quick. Yeah, article eight is final approval and filing for minor and major subdivisions. So we took that section from both minor and major, and this section kind of just says that regardless of the type of subdivision, all the final approval and filings are the same for just consistency basis.
Right.
So there should be, just going through there, everything is nice, I think there's a few questions, so on page 41, article 10, or article nine revisions to approved plans. I had a question, says, does the planning board want, or what does the planning board want for days prior? Seven days is needed for regular applications, I think for consistency, seven would be fine. So this says in section, in article nine, section one procedure, an applicant, an applicant for revision to a previously approved plan shall at least blank days prior to a scheduled meeting of the board request to be placed on the planning board's agenda. So these are the type of questions that are, that are remaining.
Yep, they're minor, so, so to me, the answer to that would be seven. Because typically that, that would allow Julie or Sheila to have received information from like Gary as they're consulting with one another, as they get that agenda together. So that it's not down to 11th hour, right? Seven days in advance, that's sufficient.
Easy.
That's my, that would be my vote. Yeah, thank you, Craig.
Yeah, I think a lot of these are, a lot of the remaining questions are administrative, if that makes sense, so I don't know what. I, I agree with you, Peter, I think seven days is great, I know in other municipalities we've been working with, we've kind of been pushing for a seven-day deadline, so we can get, make sure that it's posted. At least a week, but hopefully a week before. I think that would be good. That's one of the questions. On page 44, George had a question related to penalties, so this would be article 10 inspections and enforcement. Section two, letter little g, and it says, a person who conveys any land in a subdivision which has not been approved as required by these regulations, regulations shall be punished by a fine of not less than 100 and not more than 2,500 for each conveyance. The municipality may institute proceedings to enjoy a violation of this section and make like attorney fees and court costs if this is a party. George's comment was, are these maximum penalty dollar amounts specified by statute seem low and inadequate incentive to comply for those that are not otherwise fined at a date questioner? So I think he was talking about, are the amounts of fees for this? I don't know if the, or the fines, I mean, I don't know if Belgrade is a town that has the select board set these fees or fines, or if they're usually found in the ordinance, that would be the only alternative I really see besides picking a violation cost, a fine, a fine price, not a fine price, but a fine price.
So Charles, I'm trying to think like, okay, if we do something in the ordinance and have a range that allows some flexibility for whoever, whether it's judgment by us or whoever does that, would have, have a way to do that without having to change the ordinance every single time someone has a different idea about what a fine amount would be, is that?
Right. It can be something that the select board sets, has to review, but I, I'm not sure what the select board's administer, procedure with that would be, if that's fully within their thing, I think that's just something we can kind of, this is something we could leave for the town attorney, who was kind of more in tune with the fine procedures in the town.
Agreed, Gary, is this something you could make sure to ask Anthony about that would have some clarity on this?
But the fine procedure?
Yeah.
I mean, every other, every other ordinance says 100 up to 2,500 per day per violation. Why wouldn't that work? Keep it all the same.
Yeah, we can keep it consistent across the board.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes. So based on that, I like the range idea, if we be consistent, that's okay, the only only fly in the ointment is if someone else had some other idea, like select persons had to do something. I can't imagine they would, but let's just run it by Anthony or somebody and make sure that we're good.
I will.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think a lot of these, I might just kind of table, look, table the questions for tonight that I have for like administrative stuff and kind of just get a list to Anthony or just sit down with Anthony and talk with him about these specifically. On page 50, I updated the table. I know someone had made a comment about a table not showing and.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think that's a small change, I'm just kind of going through and seeing the comments. Just want to see if there's anything major or. I don't know if anyone on the planning board, if you have any other questions, I think we've kind of addressed a lot of the topical issues, and a lot of these are just kind of small.
Craig, Rich, Sarah, anything jumped to mind that you think, oh, I got, we got to ask Charles this thing while we still have him?
I don't have any.
Yeah, generally, we've kind of really worked through this. And, and what, one of the biggest changes between this version, the ordinance and the previous one is that George provided all the updated references to like, for example, the freshwater wetlands within the proposed subdivision shall be identified in accordance with the U S Fish and Wildlife Services National Wetlands Inventory. So just the N W I index and how they kind of run those things. A lot of those updates, I'm just kind of. I, there's a few questions I have here that are just like whatever our administrative procedures, so again, I don't want to step on the toes of the planning board, but I can make sure to make a note of those edits or suggestions from the town. Whether it's talking with Gary, Julie, or Anthony. I think the people who are involved with like the collection of the applications and all that can provide great insight. Yeah, for the most part, this is a, I want to say a final draft. Again, I would hope that we can give this to, this version to the town attorney. And he can kind of give us a little bit more, any final words, anything that you might be, again, a lot of this is from the state model ordinance, so I would hope the state model ordinance doesn't have any problems. I didn't doubt it, but I, we did also move away from it too, because we kept the minor and major designations. Really played around with this so that it fits Belgrade. And protects a lot of things we were interested in protecting.
Yep, right, it's not just a rubber stamp of state model ordinance and applied to Belgrade, it was tailored hopefully to address the concerns that exist.
Yeah.
Good. So, so, so Charles, if you're good with that, let's move in that direction, just take up those administrative things with the people that do that, those things. I think you know where we're coming from, being consistent with other things is good, in terms of typing or whatever. Amounts, whatever they're going to be, that's consistent, we're all good with. Amounts, whatever they're going to be, that's consistent, we're all good with.
Yeah.
Get it in Anthony's hands and then see if he likes it and then go to the town attorney. Look for, look for any. Gotchas from, from Michael's perspective. Uh, so that we can keep on making progress because we need, we need to.
Don't know what happened to my light in my room, but it just went down.
Um, huh, weird.
Yeah, I was just trying to traffic so there goes.
Great. Give a smart light that's emotional.
It was, it was the word document on the screen actually that went off. So I just pulled it up again. Um, but yeah, any other questions that I, I would encourage all of you to kind of go through it again. And if you do have the word document, I said that was just, there's a few comments on there. Um, that I think would be, that might be worth looking at. If not, definitely don't go line by line. No need. I tried to pull as many errors out of there. As possible, but I'm sure that there's some more. I'll give it one more.
Yeah.
Look through and maybe the town attorney, that is, I will catch you as well, hopefully.
Okay.
My safety net.
So if we have any, any last minute things we, that we see or I think, should we just email them to you?
Yeah, you can send them to me. I'll just make a note of them, make the change, track it, whatever.
Okay, great. Um. Anything else, Charles?
No, that's all I have for now until the, we, we start talking different ordinances, but.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, planning board members, anything else for Charles?
Uh, no.
All right.
So, um, when will we be starting on the, uh, the solar? Ordinance.
I think I have to, that's a conversation, I think, the planning board, we need to have about the direction. Of which ordinances and the priority for each ordinances that are on the table. Uh, I know George had mentioned, we might have to change a different ordinance. In Belgrade, I forget the, uh, exact one. Um, Peter, but George mentioned that in things that we're changing here.
Commercial probably, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it from George real quick.
Yeah, I think it was a commercial one. Cause there are sections in there that. They talk about wind and.
Or the, um, I think. That we were viewing the multi-unit residential dwelling ordinance.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
George had asked if we should incorporate the appropriate performance standards from the nineteen seventy. Multi-unit residential dwelling ordinance into the subdivision ordinance if any. Um, and then rec, make sure that we take the, what George is asking or. Proposing, I don't think it's like an official proposal or anything, but he had mentioned, um, taking the important. Aspects of the multi-unit residential dwelling ordinance and then recommending to the select board to repeal this order, that ordinance. Um, but I think that's a larger conversation. Um, I know that one of my predecessors, Chris Huck. Had suggested that according to George, when we, you rewrote the commercial development review ordinance. Um, I can kind of go through some of Chris Huck's emails and notes if he has on me to see if there's any more. But that's the only other thing that I can think of. I know Anthony and I had talked a little bit about other ordinances as well. So when I. Um, Peter, when I talked to him about the administrative changes to this ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, I'll. Ask him what his ideas are and then maybe bring the conversation to the planning board.
Okay, that sounds good.
Um, great.
I think we're in good shape. Um, thank you so much for all the work that you've done and the patience you've given us.
No problem. I appreciate it. Appreciate everyone's hard work as well.
Great work. Thank you.
So, so thanks very much, Charles. Have a very nice night and we'll talk to you soon.
Yeah, talk to you all soon. Take care.
Okay.
You.
Here.
Alright, so for the planning board members. An item left on our agenda to deal with, which is the minutes from. June seventeen and. We all are there, right? So we've got Peter, George is not here, Rich, Sarah, Craig. So we can, we can vote on these guys.
Yeah.
Does everybody have them? Okay. Ye, Sarah. Alright. Okay. Alright, um, planning board members, what edits are needed on these, uh, minutes? Does anybody have anything?
I haven't found anything yet.
Okay. Me, me either. Um, I, I do want to comment, a positive comment and Julie, thank you and, um, also Sheila. I really appreciate, like, for example, where it says purpose for each of these items where we say. Um, say what's going on. We say a new commercial use, a home occupation business to a commercial operation. Those sorts of phrases I think are very helpful and very descriptive and accurate for the reason why. We are hearing the application in the first place. So I, I appreciate that clarity in the purpose for each of these. Items. So thank you. And for the planning board members, uh. The order in which we tackled things, it was a little. Right now, it's a little confusing which thing we did. So I'm assuming that what we have laid out here is the way we did it. For old business and new, and new business. You might recall the agenda was a little bit. Um, structured a little oddly last time. It always should do these things in this order. So I'm assuming what we have is all good, but. I got nothing else, so.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
But does that, people? Alright, any edits to suggest? Anybody? Rich, Craig, Sarah? Okay. I, I have none. Um, so if we are good with these, uh, minutes, I would accept a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of July seventeenth.
I second it.
Thank you, Sarah. Let me just do correction if you don't mind. So June seventeen, right now, July seventeen.
Did I say July? Oh, June.
I think you meant June, I think.
I don't pre, uh, forecast things.
Right, if you did, can I know the lottery numbers?
Yeah.
Alright, alright, so all those in favor of approving the minutes? So across the top, Rich?
Yes.
Uh, Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I approve, so, uh, also agree. So four in favor, none opposed. Um, very good. So that's done that. Let's, um, I have one thing I want to make sure to talk about with you folks, but I wanted to check in with Gary. Gary, any town business from your end?
Um, I can't think of anything new. I've. I finally got a complete application for Gagnes. So we'll have to schedule that at some point.
Hey.
And I don't know, we don't have too many surely and permits left. We got one or two.
Getting there, huh?
We're getting there, yes.
Right. Right, great.
And that, that other one, that lady of the lake, she hasn't got back to me. Tyler Evans told me he wouldn't be ready until August. On his subdivision.
Yeah.
Well, there's somebody we're waiting for rather than they're waiting for us.
Yeah. That's about it, I guess.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Gary. So, the thing I want to make sure to bring up was, um, uh, I haven't caught up on, on every single email, but I tried to go through them. Tonight by five. Um, this has to do with, uh, when to return, if, if we are to return to a, uh. Meeting that's at the town office and in-person thing. I think the question that was posed was, do we want to s? Is it going to be at six or seven? And I just want to make sure people put in their voices and say. They want to be at six or seven. So I don't know if you all have, um, but please make sure you, you cast your vote.
So you want to, we have to email that in? Cause I'd prefer six. I mean, I don't want to be up.
Yeah, you can say six and, and I just asked Julie to please note that and, um. I, I said six, Craig. My reasoning, just so you know, is that we've had lots of long meetings. And I am, I am spent, but when it's ten and it's seven. And then it's going to be a four hour meeting or something. Oh my gosh, or even nine. Um, so if we start at seven, that only gets.
Too late.
It's too late. I personally feel just wiped out by the end of the day. If I knew we could, we could have just two hour meetings, I wouldn't mind starting at seven.
Wouldn't mind if there are change to Wednesdays.
Oh, really?
Well, whatever, I'm fine. Six o'clock.
I can live with either one. I had said I preferred seven, but I know that's not the majority of Oden. Um, and I'll tell you the, my reason for seven o'clock isn't real good or my rationale. And that is I like to watch the news before I come.
I, I do.
Rich, I watch Channel Six.
I do too.
It comes on at four.
Yeah, but I, I miss, I can, uh, watch, uh, what's his name at six thirty, the National Park. And live five of and still be there in time, but six is fine. I just have to also learn how to eat my supper. Get ready for supper before, uh, the meeting or plan on eating at eleven o'clock at night or at ten o'clock.
Yeah, eating, eating that late does not work, right? So, i- if it's a, if it's a in-person meeting, I'm like getting a piece of pizza. Office. If it's at home, we can have leftovers and I can wolf that down between the end of my workday and the start of this, so.
Well, I went to Christmas night for steak sandwiches and I got down at the, uh. Town office and, uh, there was an accident at the intersection and. I had to park at the, uh. Whatever you want to call it, the recycle or, uh, place and walk across the street, which is fine, but. That took the five or ten minutes away that I had planned to eat it. So I'm going to eat it after this. Anyway, Sarah.
That's okay. Um, um, I like the flexibility of, of doing some meeting, Zoom meetings. Is there any? Any reason why we have to be presential?
But say that again for my purposes, any reason?
Okay. I have, I have you guys going through my earbuds. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, so I just asking, um, the main reason to be presential. Uh, is there any reason why we cannot keep doing Zoom meetings? I, I, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you, uh, I'm gonna give you my scientific portion of it. By, by doing some Zoom meetings, we saving gas. And we, we saving food, uh, CO2 foot, footprint. But that's a very liberal. Uh, version of things. And I know that you guys are very conservative. So. So I, I just throw it out there anyways. I, we, as all of you guys know, we went through this. Uh, mic, microburst, uh, just last night and, um. For my particular family, the deal was that Bert was at the lake. Man, tinkering around with a seadoo. He saw the storm coming. He was checking the seadoo. He runs in front of the storm. Parks the seadoo, gets in the new Jeep that he just got two weeks ago, which was probably. Ten fifteen feet from the seadoo. He, uh, weathered the storm inside the Jeep. The storm lasted probably ten fifteen minutes. It was a total whiteout. When the whiteout clears, the seadews were nosed down in the la, in the lake, both of them. I mean, they're supposed to be like this. They were nosed down on the lake and our boardwalk was gone. And, uh, two lots down the road, we had, uh, I don't know if you guys know Mr. Earl Smith?
Yeah.
His, his, he was sitting in his porch five minutes before the storm. He gets in. And his whole back porch was ripped out from the house completely. So it was, it was very scary. And you know, um, people will say, oh, we have this kind of things happen before. Different parts of the lake, different parts of the state. It just don't happen all the time in Belgrade lakes. But, uh, we haven't heard, we have not really seen anything like this before, not even in the news. Uh, and I really, I really feel I have to do something with this, uh, climate change thing. So anyways, that, I, I do recycling, I have been doing recycling for ten fifteen years. I take my, my bottles, I separate my. Glass and my, my metals and my plastics just for being a good citizen. And I think. The next car I'm buying is an electric car and, uh, if we can keep doing some meetings, we keep, we keep saving the, saving the world. That's. My opinion, but that's a very liberal. And I'm sorry for the big speech. And unfortunately, it's going to be all recorded for the meeting.
It, it's all good, Sarah, and I appreciate where you're coming from on this. But I want to make sure I, I'm answering your question or, uh, um, commenting on your statements maybe. Uh, based on what I know from a, from a town perspective. And the answer to your question is, is there any reason that we have to be in person? I think really is answered by the select persons. They're meeting on Tuesday and they're going to be discussing policy about. Um, um, this law governing remote meetings. So they're going to talk about. Uh, in short, after July, they'll talk about a transition to in-person meetings. So if anybody could say that. That meetings, whether it's ours or any other board or thing, I think it would be the select board that would. Have a say.
So, so, so if I have an opinion, I have to send a note to the select board?
I, I guess that's, that's the direction I would go.
Okay, I'll do so.
So, so, um, on, on the twenty-ninth, Sarah, um, Anthony sent out an email about this.
Yeah.
Um, I'm reading just from what he, what he wrote there. So.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm not pulling stuff out of the sky. It's, it's, it's right there. Do you have that?
I do have the email, but to be honest with you, I skimmed over the last. Three, four days, I would just been skimming stuff and because we're getting ready for the fourth. And then. Uh, uh, I was planning to sit down yesterday night to go over all of it in complete depth. And obviously, you know where my, my time went last night.
Right, right. Things got sidetracked.
Yeah, yeah. Was, uh, ninety degrees, uh, in the water.
This is insane. It was total insane. It was real. It was a, a hard scare because I'm used to, to hurricanes in Puerto Rico. And you guys are here used to a snowstorm and once the snowstorm stop. It's just completely natural to run outside and start cleaning. And in Puerto Rico, when you have a hurricane, you prepare for it. You shelter and you wait till, till the radio tell you. Now it's safe to get out. If you tinker around before the radio says it, you're really. The, most of the pop, uh, fatalities down there have happened because people just venture out. have happened because people just venture out before the government said it's okay to get out. So, so when I get down there, this happened, Bert calls me, oh my God, you wouldn't believe what happened. It's everything fine at our house. I said, yes, it's fine. So he told me what happened. He said, well, you want me to go and help you? And she said, he said, yes, come down. So I was not giving any thought to the fact that we could have more of it, you know, because the, the thunderstorms were between three and six. So I just rushed down there to go and help me around 4:30. But when I, as I'm, as I'm driving in, I seen branches all over the place. So, oh my God, this just looked like a, like a hurricane. And then when I getting close to our lot, there was power lines in the ground. So I couldn't go over that. So I said, well, I'm going to park and I'm going to go around that. But when I started walking that way, I smelled propane. And I said, oh crap, this is a red zone that is active. I gotta run the other way, not towards it. So, so that's happening and trying to reach there to tell him, let him know that there was propane gas going on to go and get shelter, you know, to go in somebody's basement or something. It's, we have an explosion, you know, you never know which way it's going to blow out. So, so as I'm doing tentacle bird, I have Miss, Mr. Smith's daughter behind me. And she was in a panic to go to her, her parents' house because both of them are elder, obviously. So she gets out of the car and said, why are you stopping? Why are you stopping? So I explained to her and she said, she said, well, I'm going to park here. I'm going to keep walking. I said, I have to grab her. Okay. I really, I, all the whistles went on me. I have to grab her and said, listen to me. You're going to get in your car and we're going that way. Your dad, you told me, you just told me you talked to your dad and your dad is in the basement. So just call him and tell him to stay there. But you and I, we're going back. And then she said, no, 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 I'll be fine. Don't worry. I had done this before. I said, listen to me. And I started crying and I said, I don't want to be the last person to have seen you. Okay. So we are going that way. And when, when she, she got that, that I was crying, she backed out and we went out and we, there was another rainstorm about another 10 minutes and we weathered in the car. And then when that passed, that the radar and the, and the weather channel was clear, then we, we did something else. But you know, I was, for me, it was a real shaken moment because the last thing you want to think of is that we just went out, we just recovered from quarantine and we, we're going to, we're getting ready to celebrate the fourth and that in our, in our community, somebody died and actually somebody actually died. It's just that we don't know the person. The woman that got crushed in her car didn't make it.
I really, I see, I had heard someone was going to, was lifelighted, but I didn't know that they had not survived.
So yeah, yeah. So somebody just told me today that that lady didn't survive. I don't know who it is. Do any of you know who it is?
No.
So it's.
Go ahead. No.
Listen, the, the, that car right now, at least is next to Lake Point real estate. And literally it was like grabbing a, a, a aluminum paper and you just crunch it like this. And it was a tree that just fell on top of her.
I don't think that's, I think you've, that truck wasn't the one that she was in.
Oh, that was not it? Okay.
Now, those people in the truck that was crashed jumped out and they hit under the bridge.
Oh, no kidding.
And she was up to either Pinehurst camps or the camps right across from Lake Point. And her daughter just jumped out of the car. They just came back from getting groceries. Her daughter just jumped out of the car, ran in the house and she was still in the car and the tree came down and
Oh, God.
crushed her.
Terrible situation. I, I didn't know that she didn't make it.
Yeah, she didn't make it.
Like, yeah. Well, Sarah, the, the, obviously this, this whole event was very, very ill in it, in it. Probably hit alarm bells for you from your home in Puerto Rico.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Like, hey, I've seen this before, right? That stuff, right? And so I think you're, you probably really helped out this other woman. She doesn't know it yet, but you probably really helped her much more than she realized. So that's good. Way to go.
Hey, you know, I tried to play safe. I just, it just scared the life out of me. Really. I ain't never been in a red zone, an active red zone. I've been out of it. I've heard of it and I would follow in the news, but never been in a red zone. And I, I, I think I was able to identify it quick anyways, but.
Has anybody heard for sure? I assume it was straight line winds versus tornado.
What?
I did. I heard a weatherman on Channel 13 said it was a, an identified microburst, meaning that rapid downdraft. And then it's got a signature tree, tree felling signature, which goes in like almost like clock direction because when the wind goes down, it splays out like you know, you might have a tree going down this way in one area, this, in another area, as the wind is coming right down. Goes in all directions. So apparently that was confirmed to be a microburst.
Ah, yeah. Okay.
No kidding. So, so why are those created? What, what create those things? Do you know? It has to do with the climate change or anything?
Oh, I don't know about that. The, the, the specific part that I, I heard the weatherman talk about was the, we call it rapid downdraft. Now, what causes the rapid downdraft? I'm not trying to link that to to climate change or not. I'm just saying that specifically, in this case, it's rapid downdraft that occurs. Which is different than say a tornado.
Yeah, tornado usually leave like a path of a, of a lammor basically.
It's like that, but there'd be updrafts going there and have barometric pressure changes. So this is the cause. I'm not the expert. Don't pretend to be, but this is what I heard, heard the differentiation today.
Interesting.
Yeah. Yep. Well, um, Sarah, thank.
So we, we, yeah, we, we gotta be, we're blessed. Whatever got lost, got lost. But you know, we, we still have our shirts on. So it's too bad. I, I would like to know who, who this person was and somehow get in touch with the family. It's a hard deal.
Yeah.
Yep. Yes. It's very, very it's a real tragedy. It really is. Um, so there are a lot of things wound in there, but we also had our conversation about, about our meetings. And so I don't know when we'll hear the results, but I think that as far as the select board is concerned, they're meeting next Tuesday. He said next Tuesday. This was on, so this, that must be July 5th that they meet or 6th. Right? Because he wrote this last Tuesday. So he said next Tuesday. So after that, we'll probably hear more about August meetings. So stay tuned. All right. May, may we call it a night? I want, if, if, is that okay?
We can.
Yeah.
You only, you only come in, I, I almost wrote an email to the, and I guess I just didn't want to fluff more feathers or whatever, but the bright side thing, I almost wrote an email back after receiving two emails the last couple of days. They're really pissing contests emails. And we don't need, as, as a planning board, we don't need to receive those memos and they should keep private kind of stuff to themselves and not, we're not going to change our opinion based on whether somebody's mad at somebody. But I didn't, but I wish I could tell them, keep your, keep your, you know, whatever emails that don't pertain to this project directly.
Right.
Don't need that at planning.
I'm, I'm glad you said that because, um, you know, I saw those same emails and I, my response would have been if I had emailed it. These observations or what has occurred between you and the applicant have no, no bearing on the planning board processes or how we handle an application. That's another matter. That's a silver matter. You know, please. And so I, I struggle with how much to say sometimes email, because maybe it just stirs it up more. But it is a matter of public record. So I think the best practice it so far is to not engage back.
That's right.
There's.
Yeah. I, I.
And then just gently remind people, you know, you know, keep your, keep your opinions about these other things that have nothing to do with the planning board to the appropriate audience and the appropriate audience is not emailing the planning board and the select board or else has no bearing.
Yeah, that's right. I, I just don't know if, if we had a, a code of behavior or ethics during these meetings, but the, I, at least what I think I got hired for here is that our only job is to get the application, process it and match the application to the ordinances and see if it matched the ordinances, if it fits in the ordinances. And then if there's not completely measuring to the ordinances, then we ask for more information and, and once it's all complete, then we, we go item by item and vote on whether it's acceptable. And that's all we can do. It's not a time to be, to be ranking our jobs or to be telling if we're doing a good job or not. It's not a time to tell that the process is unfair or that all the processes are more faster than others. It's just a time to just, for us, it's just a time to be able to concentrate on our job, on reviewing the application, checking the ordinances and all this side talk, what it does to all of us is get distracted. Get us, don't allow us to work on our job, if I were to say that. So I don't know if, when the meeting starts, we can have a little creed that we read that we just talk about that, reminding everybody in the, in the meeting about that. So we don't get sidetracked with it because that actually makes our, our, our meetings longer.
Absolutely. Yep. And that, that may be a good, good reminder. We can frame maybe frame the discussion such that in interest, introductory remarks could include something like is this board's intent to stay on track with things and, and speak about things that are pertinent or relative to the applications.
That's right.
Observations are, don't belong here or something like that.
Or quarrels between the neighbors. That's not part of our business. That's their problem. That's not ours. If they, they actually don't want the business there, they like the business. It's not our problem. It's not, our job is just to get the application in, read it, check it towards the ordinances, make sure that the applicant is following the law. And we just said, yes, they're following the law. And actually in ensuring all that and being thorough, we avoid the applicant to get involved with issues later down the road. So sometimes the applicant seems to be tired of the fact that it's a long process, but but what we're all trying to do is try to do our job, do it well, and actually protect them from future issues in the future. That's all, that's, that's the way I see it anyways.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yep.
Um, thank you, Sarah, for all those comments. I just wanted to make sure to say another thank you to all of you. Thank you so much for all you contribute to the town. Thank you for your efforts with the planning board. I really appreciate it. On tonight, we had another meeting and I know people probably have other things to do than just do planning. Please have a great Independence Day and a nice long weekend. Enjoy your time with whomever. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks, right? So okay, motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second that.
In favor? All in favor, unanimously in favor. Thank you, everybody. Have a great, long weekend.
Okay. Thank you. Good night.
Yep.